Alrighty, good evening. Welcome to the November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. We have a fairly light agenda tonight, which is a good thing. Before we get started, I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Have the commission introduce themselves. Bob, you want to start for us?
Bob Legner, Commissioner.
Thank you.
In person, Commissioner.
Linda Curtis, alternate.
And Stevens Chair.
Katie Brandt.
Paul Sheenley, Commissioner.
Staff.
Steve McCollum, Land Use Coordinator.
Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Thank you very much. Also like to read the use of personal electronic devices policy of the commission. Please note for the record that any personal electronic device used by the commission members is for the purpose of reviewing materials located in the Google Drive on the town's website. Excuse me, I may have to have Katie sit in for me. I tested, I'm not. So let's start by opening the public hearing for.
I'm sorry, before we do that, there are two things that I would like to commission to consider adding to the agenda. Under new business, there is an application submitted for forty-two Plum Tree Road, A and P Associates LLC, eight F thirty G affordable housing amended site plan. And then under work session, you guys can consider adding the two thousand twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting schedule. That's for next year.
Shall we do that now or wait till we get to those portions?
I, I, I would do that now, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do we have a motion to add forty-two Plum Trees Road Amendment, Site Plan Amendment? All in favor? Nays? Don't move. And do we have a motion to add the two thousand twenty-four Planning and Zoning Meeting Schedule to the agenda?
Some of.
Second, second.
All in favor? Don't move, thank you. Okay. Back to public hearings.
I need the legal notice.
Please, this one may have been read in already, Mr. Chairman, but we can just.
So. Public hearing for Begel LLC zoning text amendments, zoning map amendments, neighborhood overlay zone, bed and breakfast, one fifty Putnam Park Road.
The hearing November third, November tenth, two thousand twenty-three public notice. The National Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven PM in Conference Room D of the Missile Center, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, to hear the following. Begel LLC, for property located at one fifty Putnam Park Road, for zoning text amendment and map amendment, allowing application of the neighborhood overlay zone and the bed and breakfast regulations, section S point eight point six and eight point seven. The property can be found in the assessors records, that's map forty-four, block forty-seven A, and lot one ninety-one. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landviews@bethelconnecticut.gov. Parking for hearing is located near the roof of the building. Ken Stevens, Chairman.
Representing the applicant.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel at two seventy-five Greenman Avenue. My firm name is Land Use and Conservation Council. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant and property owner, Begel LLC, which is represented here tonight by Elena Shepeva, sitting here in the front row, its principal member. This is an application for zone text amendment, but also zone map amendment. So we sent notices of this public hearing to people who own property within five hundred feet. And I'm submitting a copy of the notice and the US Postal Service Record of Delivering. I also have some images which, and letters which I'll get around to talking about later, and then just like to submit these now for the record.
Now I believe that one was filed, but if you want to take a look at it for reference, you can't. I'm sorry?
Should we read it into the record?
What's that?
That's.
Sure.
Comments?
Yeah. I.
Now we're winning, Mr. Olson's there.
You can do it now.
Thank you. Putting in some admission from Beth C. Wagner, planning his own official staff reports. One fifty Putnam Park Road. In regards to proposed text amendment to the Neighborhood Services Overlay District, the commission is reminded that the overlay zone was created with the Mitchell, Mitchell gas station in mind in order to allow upgrades to a pre-existing non-conforming gas station located along, excuse me, Route fifty-eight, close to the Redding border. The commission at the time basically allowed modernization of the station, including the canopy and incidentals found in today's stations, including convenience store and a small food service component. Under the present overlay district, the NSOD is allowed in the R forty-one acre and R eighty-two acre residential zone. A request of the applicant is to allow a bed and breakfast with a personal service establishment within this overlay zone. The above items are presently defined within the zoning regulations definitions as follows. Bed and breakfast, the provision of overnight accommodations and a morning meal within the dwelling unit to transients for compensation. Personal service, a business use or activity involving services of a personal or domestic nature, including but not limited to hair and nails, tailoring, Connecticut state license, massage therapy, shoe repair, tanning, exercise, dance, self-defense, personal training, and music studios, but excluding tattoo parlors. In reviewing the enclosed proposal and parcel where it would be conducted, the commission should also take into consideration other R forty and R eighty parcels that could be affected by this change. If the commission were to consider the amendment to the regulations and the map amendments, staff would recommend that you review item five dash nine D three, gas filling stations subsection. There are considerations that should be discussed and considered, such as acreage, major arterial road location, number of rooms, restaurant location and size, setbacks from adjoining residential uses, et cetera. Staff would request that the hearing be continued for further discussion of the amendment and consideration of potential revisions if proposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. David, can you call up the Google Maps for the property?
Sure. That's the long time. Maybe I'll stand over here. That's better. That still looks like top. How is this? Whenever, there. Good, can you start with the map rather than? Oh, sure. Okay. Begel is the owner of an eight point two acre site located at one fifty. It contains a portion of a pond, one half of that pond that you can see there. And the little river runs out of the pond and across the street. That's Little River in quotes. It's currently improved with essentially a single family home that's about fifty-eight, they're circling that. An accessory home and a barn which are located on the Southern Lee property line. Begel is also the owner of the rear parcel here, which is about twenty additional acres and runs from behind the pond all the way to Dipmar, almost all the way to. Within fifty feet of Dipmar, right? The property is surrounded by extensive open space, including Putnam Park on the south, which runs on the east and west sides of Route fifty-eight, and that's the green part that you can see there. Reading Land Trust land, which abuts the park to the rear and has access from Partridge Drive. Bethel Land Trust land at the end of Deer Run Estates and Countryway Homeowners Association land behind those housing and countryway. So my client's vision for this property is to create a destination retreat with rooms for peaceful overnight stays, personal treatment facilities, a greenhouse, and a farm table restaurant with about quality fifteen tables, so pretty small operation. The first step in our development of the property was to come to you for permission to have a farm stand on the property, which required minor text amendments that would allow a non-occupant to run a farm stand. You approved that and we were able to sell some of the produce grown on site. A lot of the produce was consumed by local non-human residents who enjoyed the smorgasbord that was put out for their consumption. But still, I think we're pretty happy with the results of that operation this year. So this is the next step, which is to authorize the proposed uses for our vision under the zoning regulations on the map. You may remember a few years ago, as discussed in Beth C. Wagner's memorandum, when we worked on the redevelopment of Mitchell Gas Station up the road. The vehicle for those zoning approvals was to create this new overlay zone called the Neighborhood Services Overlay District, which would authorize, give the commission the discretion to authorize certain commercial uses in primarily residential areas, R forty and R eighty, where such uses had historically been carried out on the property and were useful to serve the neighborhood and the area. In the Mitchell's case, it was a longstanding, very tiny gas station. I don't know how many of you remember it. It was an extremely small brick building, probably the size of this room, and couldn't be expanded because it was a non-conforming use. So the NSOD made it a conforming use under, allowed under the overlay, overlay zone, and allowed them to reconstruct it. I think it came out extremely well. I'm very happy with the architecture. I think it fits in. And everybody I know drives a fifty-eight stops there, so I think it's been extremely useful and extremely good addition to the neighborhood. So we think the NSOD is an appropriate approach for this redevelopment as well. Because it would require a map amendment for any particular use, it would allow the commission to maintain near complete control over the types of uses allowed on the property and the limit the extent to which it applied to other properties without the commission saying, yes, that's okay, that can apply there, and still retain the residential character of the neighborhood and the area. To use it for this use, it requires a couple of additions. Principally, we have added two new uses to the zone, bed and breakfast and personal service establishment. It will be allowed uses in the overlay zone. Existing uses in the overlay zone continue to be allowed, including one that we want to use, which is restaurant. We did have to fix the typo numbering, so it looks like there's a change to the restaurant, but it's just changing it from E to four. So a few words of both of these additions. They're both currently defined in the regulations. We're not adding anything near the regulations. As noted in stack memorandum, the definition of a bed and breakfast is the provision of overnight accommodations and a morning meal. This fits what we intend to do perfectly. I did want to note that in the residential zone, there are a number of additional limiting factors for bed and breakfasts. Because this is being added to the NSOD, those limiting factors will not apply. So your review of the special permit that's required will give you the discretion to find the right ways to make these fit in a way that works for the property, but those requirements that would limit it if it was just simply R eighty zone are not going to apply. Personal service, business use or activity involving services of a personal or domestic nature, including but not limited to hair, nails, tailoring, massage therapy, shoe repair, tanning, exercise, dance, self-defense, personal training, music studios, but excluding tattoo parlors. So again, we intend to provide spa treatment services, and this fits in with what people would expect for that kind of service at this kind of facility. Combined with the restaurant use, what we would expect is that our guests would spend the night or the weekend, have a morning meal in the spa building, indulge in some personal pampering, explore the property and the area, and then come back and have lunch or dinner in the restaurant, maybe buy some of our farm produce and products. David, can you call the site document? It's not a site having, it's a conceptual. We have an eight gauge, we have engaged an architect out of Richmond and more who's been working on images and conceptual drawings for this property for a number of months. There it is. Can you zoom in a bit? There we go. So I'm going to walk over to the television now, just a point for the commission's benefit. Front building here is the house. It is very close to the road.
That one's been out. That's there now?
That's the existing house, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Then there's two structures on the southern property line, a single-family residence and a barn. We would propose greenhouses and event space in this area, which is a bit of a hill coming up from here with a farming area in between. And then the spa and wellness center and suites is back here, about in the pond, essentially, so you have a back view of the pond. Again, this is a conceptual plan to be refined when the engineers get to hand on it. Next page, please. So we've done some renderings of what this might look like. I'll talk about the existing structure in a little bit, but our intention is to retain the stonework that forms the foundation and some areas are under foundation garage and replace the structure on top with a new structure. You can see the driveway coming in from Route fifty-eight with the two little buildings on the side and.
This would be the existing house, Peter?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the spa building in the rear. David, before we move on, can you go back to the G I S, I mean the Google Street View, and we'll just show what it looks like right now. I think, and Elena, you can confirm this for me, the Google Street View is actually fairly recent because it reflects some of the vegetation removal that we've done in the last year since Begel purchased the property. Just wanted to show that before we move on. So that's the existing single-family structure.
You just cleaned up the property, you know, all of the garbage and all. That trees and cleaned it up, set up the garden in the back with the medicines.
Okay, scroll down. Oh, yeah, sure. So that's again the plan. It's basically the same height, same structure. It'll be a new structure on top of the stonework. Next image. These are the two buildings on the south side of the property. One is a barn. It'll be used for storage and the other is existing living space. Next image, please. Would you bolt it existing though? Yes. This is the rear of the spa building with a view of the pond. The intention is that each of those units will be looking right over the pond.
Well, those are to be built.
Yes, that's to be built, a new structure, yes. And it is designed to fit into the hillside, so it's. And then that's showing the spa building with the treatment facilities beneath it, the lower floor. Then on the right is the green high alley for year-round building, year-round growing of produce. No, Don, I need to go to that one yet. You may have noticed in the proposed amendments, a small addition to the preamble, which refers to historic uses, this was Beth C. Wagner's suggestion, to make sure the purpose really matched what we're doing. We think it already did, but I think there's a weird addition. So the history of this property and area is actually kind of interesting. This is your Bethel history lesson portion of the evening. Obviously, we have the Revolutionary War history of Putnam Park and the portion of the park on the west side of Route fifty-eight. That still has some of the old firedracks and everything from the Revolutionary War encampment. That, through the creation of the state park in the early nineteen hundreds. We engaged Patrick Wild to investigate the history of the home on the site to make sure it was not a historic resource that impacted. Pat gave me an email and I'm submitting that for the record. Essentially, his conclusion, through the course of several emails, was that the house was probably built around nineteen fifteen. That's the, the record that he found. So it did not have a historic importance, but Pat and I both agreed that the stonework of the house was a fairly architecturally significant feature that should be preserved for ten. And so we decided to do that. So according to Mr. Wild, the first indication of the building at today's hundred and fifty Putnam Park Road appears in the nineteen fifty-four Danbury Bethel Directory. That was his first conclusion. And at that time, the following listing appears. John and Anna M. May, Fair Lawn Restaurant, Putnam Park Road. This listing is repeated for the years nineteen fifty-five and fifty-six. And his opinion of the restaurant was presumed a facility for the usual suffering from conditions that would benefit from a peaceful countryside. This use, Fair Lawn Restaurant predates the zoning regulations, which were adopted in nineteen fifty-five. In nineteen sixty-four, Victor and Anna Courtway purchased the property and was renamed Fair Lawn Manor. In nineteen seventy-two, the directory lists it as the Fair Lawn Manor Hotel. Mrs. Courtney retained ownership of the property after divorce and changed her maiden name, Anna Lamp. And she was the owner of the property until a recent pair of sales led to Begel owning the property. Mrs. Lamp used the building as private residence. That's where she lived. Anecdotally, we have information that she rented rooms to individuals who were advancing in years and needed a place to stay. So she continued the rest home use, albeit without specific marketing or zoning approvals to do so. And she may not have needed it because of the pre-existing non-conforming use. Mr. Wild did a little bit of digital research and found some indication that owners prior to John and Anna May had used the property for a gas station, according to one directory from nineteen twenties, and that the building was probably built initially as a superintendent home for the pot. That's probably where it comes from. So as you can see, since before the zoning regulations were adopted, this property was used for commercial uses, such as gas stations, transit residential occupancy, such as a rest home or a hotel. And we believe this makes the Neighborhood Services Overlay District an appropriate overlay zone to reflect this historic use of the property. More importantly, the destination of Putnam Park, the open space that's in the area, will make, we think, this spa retreat a very desirable place for people to come and a good amenity for the area. So in that regard, I do want to share one more historic use which we found, not at this property, but at the Park property across the street, the western part, which was added to the park as a recreational property as opposed to the historic property and memorial property of the Revolutionary War encampment. And this was originally known as the Old Put Club. Nickname for Israel Putnam, Revolutionary War general after the name of the park is named, his nickname was Old Put. So there was a club. And then you go back to the images. There you go. That's the Old Put Club. This is from www PutnamPark.org. Old Put Club was formed in eighteen ninety-one by several gentlemen of Danbury and Bethel. Frank Judge, Samuel Amber, George Cole, William Benedict, Theodore Ferry, Judge Huff, and others for the purpose of building a dam across the Little Ritter, Little River. I mentioned that earlier. It goes across the street and create the lake that we know now as Putnam Park. Its present bed was on a swamp of alders, willows, sedge, and other aquatic plants through which flowed sluggishly the river. And then that had just been formed there by three brooks coming from the west side, including Little River. The site was chosen and the dam was built by Isaac M. Bartram and a clubhouse and keeper's filling was added soon thereafter. So this is the Old Put Club clubhouse. For many years, the club flourished. At one time, Mr. Frank Judge informs me about in this article. It had fifty members, but some died or moved away, others dropped out, and the last became necessary to sell and wind up its affairs. It was accordingly sold to Rogers Peak Company of New York. And for several seasons, we used by them as a summer vacation resort for their clerks and other employees. The stake acquired in nineteen twenty-three was a hundred and three acres. So we did find as well some newspaper clippings. I'm not really sure which newspaper this is from, but it basically says what people are doing in the Bethel, Danbury area. Miss Millie Judson of Bethel was spending a few days at the Old Put Club, the Old Put House. Mrs. William Vale and son George of Boston, Massachusetts have been a few days at the Old Put House at Putnam Park. Russell Hoyt is stopping at the Old Put House where he is taking Turkish baths for his health. So the young people of Wolfpits, New Town and Reading will all dance at the Old Put House Friday evenings at number twenty-first. Music will be furnished by the Davis Brothers. Fred Biskey, wife and son of Bridgeport, have been spending a few days at the Old Put House. And quite a large number of people from the near Tottenham Lake held a neighborhood picnic at Putnam Park last week. So the, the point of bringing all the Old Put Club up is it's property across the street. Sure. But it demonstrates that this area has always been, or at least a hundred years ago was, a retreat and spa for people to relax. I suspect the Old Put Club was where the quote gentlemen of the area gathered for some drinking and cards and whatever, but certainly the activities that were, that were undertaken there fit what we would like to do in this spot. So all in all, we believe that the Neighborhood Services Overlay is an appropriate vehicle for this. We think it's appropriate for the property, given the history of the property, the uses that were there before zoning was adopted. If the commission sees fit to approve this application, our next step would be to secure weapons permit and to apply for site plan and special permit in this commission under the overlay zone. But thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. It's time we're open for questions to the board. And I don't think there's anybody on doing at this point. If you have a question for the applicant, please come forward, state your name and your address, and address your questions to the commission. When everyone has had an opportunity to speak, Mr. Olson will answer the questions, or the commission will. Anyone that would like to speak?
Then I guess I will. I'm sorry, it's the first I've heard of this, so I may not know what I'm talking about, but.
You are.
Oh, yes, I am. That's suited to Ridgedale Road. I am. Maybe perhaps prior to zoning regulations, it was acceptable, no, it was acceptable to use property for a multitude of purposes, but we now have zoning regulations. So I'm wondering, what's to keep this from becoming a large resort destination or a large wedding venue or a large commercial establishment such as a Blue Jay Orchards or a beautiful restful drug rehab center? What, what are, what kind of safeties would we have in place to prevent this from growing bigger than what it used to be a hundred years ago? I mean, it sounds like it was a good old boys' club or something a hundred years ago, but this isn't a hundred years ago. That's my question.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question for the applicant?
I have a nine thirteen Karen drive. I believe you were before the board in the past for the farm stand or whatever. And so I'm assuming you're still going to do that. That's one question. And as far as the zoning changes, I, I guess I'm a little confused as to why it has to be such a large zoning change to be made. R forty, R eighty, whatever. I'm not as up on those different things yet, which I will be at some point soon. But it just seems as though it opens the door to many different things in that area that I don't think that the Bethel has wanted to do. That wasn't something that they would, you guys would have chosen to do as far as changing the zoning regulations. And it seems like it's something that should be considered a little longer than just looking at a, at a project and then making the change for all the zoning from that area. I mean, we had in there, and I just kind of skimmed over it, but it's talking about a gas station being allowed and different things like that, and it would totally change fifty-eight in that area. It's, seems like it's a big change and a lot of legalese in there that I think needed, needs to be looked at a little bit more than just saying, oh, it's great to have this bed and breakfast. So I think that it's something that should be considered a little longer than just looking at this project. And I'm just a little concerned of the size of it. When I think of a bed and breakfast, I think of a, you know, Victorian, you know, small kind of place. This is more than a bed and breakfast, seems to me, and it's seems like it's a little larger than that. I have that larger. Thanks.
Anybody else from the public here speak?
Sure. Um I guess maybe I should review the law on former uses, why I brought it up. Which is that any use that is in effect when zoning regulations are changed. And generally, that's the day they were adopted for the first time, that it could be an or recent change. Um cannot be prohibited by the change. So I could be running an asphalt plant in my backyard. And if the commission adopts a regulation that says you can't run an asphalt plant in anywhere in Bethel, I can still keep doing it. I can't expand it. And so if we look at what happened with Mitchell's gas station, they had a gas station sincerely nineteen tens or twenties on that site. Um and so when regulations were adopted, that made that property a residential zone. The gas station continued to operate, which it did for seventy five years, um but it couldn't be expanded. Um so that's that's the law on former uses. So we do make zoning changes all the time and uses that are in place get to keep going. So that's why I brought up the prior to zoning, this was used for a hotel. It uh obviously stopped being used for a hotel, but was continued to be used for similar uses all the way through. Whether it was a rest home or what Mrs. Lamp was doing, where she was essentially taking care of people um in in admittedly unpermitted restaurant. Size of it is, I think, really limited by the property itself and the wetlands on the site. Although um the applicant has purchased the rear piece of about twenty acres, it's not possible to access that from Route fifty eight. Um because there's pond and wetlands in the way. It's just really, there's no way to get back there. So it's the size of the property that is going to limit the operation. And David, can you bring up the conceptual site plan that we put up? Is it the rendering that I had on the screen, the colorized version? Yes. Okay. So this is the pond, which obviously is split between the two properties. This home exists, this structure exists, this structure exists, this structure would be a greenhouse. This would be farming area. So the greenhouse is obviously a new structure. The spa structure in the back here would have eight. Units in it. That's the size we're looking at.
Neon green is the property lines? With the lighter green?
Um well, the property line, I think, is the gray. Right here, this is the boundary line with the state park. Um. Uh this dash line is the setback line. These are existing and they're in the setback.
What's the acreage there?
It's eight acres, but the eight acres includes half the pond as well as this whole bit back here and a little bit more beyond that. So obviously, I I mean, I know this because I helped with the initial acquisition and division of the property. But we looked at trying to develop in the back here. There's no way to do it. There's a vernal pool over here. So there's no way to put a road or driveway from Putnam Park into that. Well, I guess you could build a bridge over the pond, but that seems unlikely to be cost effective. Um. As to what would stop it from being a drug rehab center? Well, that's not in the law to use some of the zoning regulations. You would have to amend the regulations to allow it. Um that's the beauty of a zone text amendment and map amendment. Is the commission controls nearly unlimited, just has nearly unlimited discretion to decide whether the text and map amendments are appropriate. Um and so if somebody said, well, Elaine has done a great job. We built the facility up and I would like to be a drug rehab center, you have to allow that. Uh in order for it to happen. I'm not saying you have to allow it. I'm saying it would be your decision whether to allow it or not. I will say the state has adopted some statutes in the last year regarding group homes. Um that allow up to eight. Require you to allow up to eight unrelated people to live in a single family home together. For things like sober houses and uh where people come out of a rehab center and into a residential living environment. That could go anywhere in the town, whether you wanted to or not, any neighborhood, whatever. Uh it's it's you. You cannot limit that. Um so it's not something that you have any control over at this point. Um. Uh on that um conceptual site plan, we showed the farming area and the greenhouse. The intention is to continue to grow produce, um process that produce onsite and sell it out of the machine. Uh likely be in the front building, um as well with that. And that will be part of the experiences it's become and stay here and buy some of that produce. Last, the comment was that it seems to be a large zoning change, and I think it's exactly the opposite. It's actually a very small zoning change. The reason that we are doing it this way with an overlay zone. Is that number one, we don't change the underlying zone. So the rest of the town where it's R forty and R eighty doesn't change at all as a result of this. The only thing that changes is the Neighborhood Services Overlay District, which is an overlay zone. That currently only applies in about one acre of land, which is the Mitchell Gas Station. We would like you to apply it to this property, which is about eight acres. So it's an extremely limited change that doesn't have any effect anywhere else. Certainly, somebody else would land in the R forty and the R eighty zone. That um thinks this is a great idea and would like to do it on their property, could come ask you for that permission. But again, it would require a map amendment and you have the ultimate discretion to decide that's good or bad. Um that's a good place for that. That's not a good place for that. So it's it's within your control. I, okay, say you have the unlimited discretion. There are limiting factors, but they mostly relate to fraud and bias and. Somebody who gets bought off, you know, is really a very unlikely thing to happen. Um. I will say that Beth uh in her memo had a couple of comments about the NSOD in general. And I don't think they necessarily related to our specific proposal, but some of them would affect it. So she mentioned. Things like being on an arterial road, um that certainly would be a reasonable requirement to add and and work through what we're doing. Um the NSOD does allow gas stations. Because frankly, that's what it was designed for, is to allow gas stations. Um or we have no intention to doing of doing that. That's that's not our intention at all. Uh I think that answers the questions from the public.
Thank you. Questions from?
It just makes no sense to put another gas station next to a graduate. It's not a good business. Just us us and um. Just if I can say.
Would you, would you give us your name, please?
Yes, I'm Elena Shafeva. I'm owner of Big L L C. So I I'm a publisher and I publish um academic journals and books and which sold around the world and as my profession goes, I travel a lot. Yeah, and seeing many things around the world and I feel like some things are could be brought in and. Implementing community and everything like that and. Also like. As we aging, you know, we want to be in a peaceful environment and relaxation is important and it's such a beautiful. Heart and such a beautiful property and make it into something extremely special, not nothing invasive, but. People want to have a good meal. Nice relaxing atmosphere and go have a rest and have a spa and think like that. So. That's that's an intention and um the greenhouses, um we wanted to build like um. What is called environment, you control environment, so you grow organic vegetables without uh any pesticide or insects involved. And then that food in the winter time can be brought through the restaurant on the table and during the summer we bring bring whatever is. Being done and uh you can talk into top route owners, Jeff and staff. And we intentionally want to partner with them. And they would be the people that would be doing the restaurant. That's they from Bethel. And they moved to Norwalk, but they love Bethel, so they live here. So we're. Looking into this kind of arrangement. I'm not going around the restaurant or on the company. Um so it's um it will be like um. Lower scale operation, no holiday. Not in extreme, I mean.
Excellent. Sure, I have um some questions for you here. Uh you had mentioned an event space in the back. Um. Well, I know we're we're having kind of do a, we're just talking conceptual right now. Um. What would that entail? We talked in like full blown weddings?
I don't think I mentioned event space. That's not the intention here.
You did.
You did.
You meant those two words.
Yes.
You you said event space and pointed to one of the buildings.
The greenhouse.
So I don't think, I didn't intend to say that. So David, can you go back to that site plan?
Sorry, we all heard it now.
Yeah, maybe I said anything in relation to the greenhouse.
Right down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the greenhouse here.
Okay, that's just a green.
But it does say event space on it. Look at that.
Yeah.
That's what you said.
I don't think I said it, though. I didn't. I didn't know that. Um.
In answer to.
So let's let Elena answer that because I didn't.
We were thinking that in um in the greenhouse, you can create two different climates. One, let's be tropical climate and. Uh grow like Southeastern Asian because Jeff cooks a lot of Asian food. So grow like lemons and different plants and so on from that would bring the aroma for for the dishes. So. Have one tropical climate and one, say, desert climate. And separate it in two and have it like a small pavilion in between that people can come and see different things that they're how they're growing. And that's not necessarily means that it's going to be an event thing. But it's more like educational exploration of advanced agriculture coming in.
Got it.
Like strawberries growing, vertical strawberries, like there's a lot right now growing in the middle east, things like that, demonstration.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So for the people, okay, that that answers that.
Yeah.
Um. You had said the site we're talking about now is about eight total acres. Um the one behind it that backs up to it, you said is about twenty. Does that have road frontage off the backside?
It's a difficult question. The answer is there's access to Ditmar. Um the property comes with a twenty five foot strip of land. That goes almost all the way to Ditmar.
Okay.
The last fifty feet is via an easement. Uh to Ditmar over the land that's there. So.
Public land or privately held?
Privately held by Begel. Um old, the easement, yes. The easement is only fifty feet long. It got the last. Bit. Reason we had to do it that way is because the house at twenty two Ditmar. Was purchased by my former client. The strip was carved off, but we needed to retain the frontage to keep that as a compliant law. So we couldn't make the strip go all the way. What it means is that probably you could put two houses. On the twenty acres if you wanted to divide it. Um it can't be accessed from Putnam Park Road, but it does have legal access to Putnam Park Road. So you could have one frontage, quote unquote, Putnam Park Road and one frontage, quote unquote, to Ditmar. Um so possibly it could be divided into two houses. Uh I don't know what Begel's plans are um for for the property, but that's the limit under the zoning.
And uh. The neighbor now is um to the south is the state park.
The neighbor to the south is the state park.
And the north is Stack.
Uh no. Um can you zoom out a little bit more, David? Or maybe it doesn't go out. Maybe you need to go back. Can you go back to the Google Maps? Yes. Let David. Okay, so um zoom out a little bit, please. So this is the pond that we saw in here. This way is the state park. Um right here to the north are three single family homes. And it says Steck Road, but that's not Steck Road. That's that's just a short road. Steck Road is further up.
Yeah.
Uh this is this is Steck Road here, I think. Um, sorry, please zoom out. On the backside, this is the twenty acres. Over here, this is Bartram Lane, I think. Somewhere here, I guess Bartram Lane is here. So this is Reading Land Trust land here. This is the twenty acres and then the Bethel Land Trust land, which was the open space for Star Lane, here on the states, is there. And the Country Way Homeowners Association owns a big chunk back here. Um so there's many opportunities for connectivity through all that open space in the state park. Now hopefully people will take advantage when it comes to here.
Uh that answers my question.
I think I'm okay for now.
Yeah, wonderful.
Pretty uh serious investment you've got here. Hope it works.
Let's blow it down in stages.
Yeah.
No questions?
Any questions?
I I have a a couple. Uh the pond itself is is. Part of that is on this property and parts on Putnam Park or?
No, part is on this property and part is on the uh the rear lot of the three single family homes to our north.
Okay.
So there are rights reserved in the deeds for access to the pond in both directions.
Okay. The 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 tan looking line going o- off the back of the uh the spa. Is that a dock?
Yes.
But they have right to use the whole pond.
They have the right to use the whole pond, correct?
Okay, that's all I had.
It'd probably be for things like kayaks and small craft like that. The pond's not big enough for anything.
Yeah, I I don't see motorboats in there.
No, just more or less canoes.
Yeah.
Things of that nature. Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Um. Ask one more time for questions from the public.
Make sure you ask on Zoom too.
Yep, I see there's many, many people talking on Zoom. Do we have any questions?
Hey, guys. Hey, guys, it's me. I just wanted to mention that um just note for the record that. Uh that this application was referred to Westcott for a regional. Uh review and also to the town of uh Reading. For their comments and Westcott replied with no comments and we did not receive anything from the town of Reading. Thank you.
For the record, that's Beth Kavagno. Thank you, Beth. Do we have any questions from those participants on Zoom? David, I don't see any hands raised.
Neither do I, Mr. Chung.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? And then we'll continue this public hearing to our next meeting. Which I believe is.
November twenty eighth.
Thank you. November the twenty eighth.
After Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, text amendment. Four dot three K dot five allowance for vintage car restoration. Mr. Marcus, are you representing the applicant? And would you mind sharing with us, Mr. Marcus, who the applicant is?
Yeah, I will tell you that. I'm the applicant.
He's gonna, he's gonna read the legal notice. Thank you.
To appear November third, November twenty twenty sixth. Public notice, the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on November fourteenth, twenty twenty three. In conference room D of the municipal center, one school three, South of Connecticut at seven P M. To hear the following. Zoning text and allowing application for vintage, vintage classic car restoration. Allow me to review the materials, plenty of the town's website. The public can send comments via regular email and email to landuse@bethelct.gov. Talking for hearing is located near the building. Ken Stevens, chairman.
These are Beth's notes.
And I will put the, I will put her memorandum up on the screen if you want to read it in the record you may have.
Planning and zoning commission, Beth Kavagno, planning and zoning official, staff report eleven nine twenty twenty three. Classic and vintage. Classic cars are at least twenty years old, but not older than forty five years. All vintage cars are twenty five years or older. Antique cars are even older or at least forty five years old. Car restoration. Car restoration in its simplest form is an oil reveal that has been built precisely the way it's manufactured initially. the way it's manufactured initially, had it coming off the production line. This can also include custom motor vehicles for restoration and modification of a classic car that incorporates elements of modern technology in order to improve the car's performance. And reviewing the enclosed text amendment to the zoning regulations, there have been several requests in the past to allow for automobile repair within the industrial parks zone, which includes the Berkshire Industrial Park located off Vale Road and the Francis J Clark Industrial Park located off Route fifty-three. The concern in regard to the allowance of general automobile repair in previous discussions and review of area car repair shops is the conditions surrounding such use are generally impossible to screen from adjacent properties and unsightly condition of outside storage necessary for vehicles waiting for repairs. This is generally allowed in the industrial zone, not the industrial park zone. Please excuse me. In order to ensure that the above does not occur, staff would recommend the following conditions as allowable use in the IP zone in order to preserve existing conditions for our industrial parks. Section four dot A dot A. Five, vintage, collectible, classic, motor vehicle restoration and customization, including storage and repair of vintage classic collector and or custom motor vehicles together with incidental online sales. A, memo lot area shall be eighty thousand square feet. B, vehicles offered for sale shall be stored within the indoor structure. C, no outdoor storage, outdoor display, or outdoor repair of vehicles is permitted. D, no signage advertising the sale of used vehicles at the site shall be displayed on any structure or on the site. It should be noted that there are two letters of support for the amendment to the zoning regulations. One from Berkshire Corporation Park located in the Stony Hill area and Anthony Rizzo, who recently acquired and made major improvements to one eighty-five Wessie Plain Street and Francis Clark Circle.
Do you want to read the letters or just both of them?
I'm sorry.
Do you want to read the letters of support or just note that they're here?
Right, right, right. Neil Marcus Coles, P C, one fifty-eight Deer Hill Avenue, and I'm here uh on behalf of Vintage and Classic LLC, which is a company that has a contract to purchase a building lot, obviously, in Francis Clark. With me to my left is Rob Madira, and he is the owner and operator with Colin Cash, who's the back row there. Um, of the facility, or will be of the facility. Uh, currently, they they operate a similar type of facility in Shelter Rock and Danbury, which they've outgrown, and they have a facility in Portugal.
Correct.
And uh, the uh, is Beth's report says the proposal before you is kind of unique. We we are not building a repair shop in the ordinary sense that you'll make an appointment on Monday morning to have your oil changed or you'll have an appointment to uh uh have, you know, fires rotated. This uh is really a, it's more like it's more like a manufacturing facility, but the difference is they don't start from scratch. What they do is they take vintage, classic antique cars as as Beth has defined them in your, in their uh their report. If you, if you want to see them, I would recommend the best view is to go on their website and see the cars that they're actually uh selling after they've uh rehabilitated them and modified them. And I mean, they're, they're really kind of amazing. I have some pictures. Uh, but they don't really do them justice, so I'm gonna give them to you anyway. These pictures were taken and then off of my computer from uh the photos that were sent to me, uh email. But if you'll see, you know, this is working on a part. I mean, they are meticulously rebuilding uh that part. I'll show you sort of the uh, the, this is not a whole picture, but this is one card that they've got there, pad their inventory, and so it's classic Ferrari. And uh, this is another type of vehicle. Uh, this is, and there are two sides here. On one side, there's a classic Toyota Land Cruiser and uh on the rear side of the seat. Uh, inside the shop, uh and again, you get an idea of how clean this operation really is. Um, and um, the next shot here. God, again, it's a couple of the classic overland vehicles and uh on both sides and just the inside of the current shop. That that's sort of a selection of type of of work uh that that turns on. But go onto the Legacy Overland uh website and uh.
My Western website?
Legacy Overland. And that will show you the the types of cars that we're talking about from the facility. Now, interestingly, uh usually when I'm talking about this type of type of operation, I'm in front of the Danbury zoning commission. And I'm talking about Mario Brook section of Danbury, where a number of custom car companies of various nations have like have alighted over the past twenty years, including some amazing collections of uh vintage antique uh and custom cars that are housed in Leonardan. He says collection over Mario Brook and uh Jim Glickenhouse is currently assembling his streetcar, which is really a race car, uh in the old Mackin facility on the Danbury Airport. And you've got a company called S T F that that they high end race tuning and store a bunch of magnificent cars. And of course, the the cream, cream of the crop is probably North American Motors, which is Bishop's operation. And uh, if you drive by, I drove by it the other night and going to Worcester School for an event. My wife was with me and she said, wow, what is that? Oh, I said, that's the North American Motors. She said, a car place? And I said, not a car place. A real, an amazing car place. But uh, it it just uh, Clarice did a fabulous job on that film. So that's the type of industry that that uh vintage and classics it will be in. And um, so obviously the question is uh to do that, they need to be in the proper zone to to allow that type of use. And they also um need to have a uh uh repair certificate from the state of Connecticut, which means that the zoning enforcement officer I mean, sign off that use is allowed in the zone. So to that extent, um, when we got involved, I I first talked to Beth about the concept and the the general feedback I got from her was very positive. And I think Robbie also meant her as well. Um, and that's the the positive feedback. But she told me that she was only concerned, as she said in her staff report, that this doesn't mushroom into becoming something of of a uh call it a traditional automobile showroom, and it's not uh for a traditional garage, mechanics, mechanics garage. So the definition of the use that we've come up with, as she put in her report, a vintage, collectible, classic motor vehicle restoration and customization, including the storage and repair of vintage classic collector and custom motor vehicles together with incidental online sales. They don't really sell. That's why I said, told you to go to the website. Uh, they don't have salespeople with a sales office in the traditional sense. It's not like uh going up to uh a colonial Subaru or a Ford already to cut, you know, it's supposed to be the traditional car dealers. Uh, people research these cars online and then they will come to perhaps see it, but they're not going to see it displayed on a car lot with a bunch of uh flags saying, uh, you know, it's uh our presidents, they sail. Uh, these cars are stored inside, as Beth said in her report, and uh they're basically the whole facility is the reason that Rob is looking at this in the first place is to expand his current shop. He just needs more space because he does do everything inside. Um, which is really kind of a shame because I'm not that far from Francis Clark, and I'd love to drive by and look at all these cars parked outside because I love them. Uh, but uh, that's not what the intention is. This is to keep cars indoors. And the other thing, of course, is that there's a security issue as well with the expensive some of these vehicles. So that's our proposal. Uh, the Francis Clark uh group is very supportive of this, obviously, because they entered into the contract to sell. The contract is continued, of course, upon our having the uh proper zoning in place. And the uh I, there really are no real negative uh sides of this application. I can't think of any adverse effects. Every time we amend the zoning regulations, we talk about the ripple effect. Yeah, you drop the rock in there, it's fine, but when you look that way out there, you say, why did I do it? Um, I don't see any ripple here. I I just, uh, it's a very kind of site specific type of use. Um, and it's a unique use, which they say is very popular over in Mario Brook and Danbury in the extent that we're going to do this in Francis Clark. Um, it's appropriate. Currently, there are automobile collections stored in Francis Clark, and most of you don't even know it.
Yeah, we do. I know very well. I remember the application of Francis Street from that.
That's for sure. I remember it too very well. But uh, there's a, you know, the the these types of uses are very low key. Uh, and I I I have my office on Deer Hill and Danbury, and I drive up New Street to Danbury. Now, on the left side of New Street, you call the fire department, it's a very s- small brick building. And all the windows are always covered in uh in carport activity and paper. They can't see it from this building. When I was a kid, that was the Packard dealer, and then it was a Hudson dealer.
Showing your age, Mr. Brines.
As a kid alone, Doug. That's like what Peter Olson was talking about, the history of the property on Putnam Park. I remember when Mrs. Courtway uh read it, I thought it's a rooming house, but he said it's sort of an old age home. It's interesting, but the building on New Street, uh allegedly, according to my friends who've actually been in it, houses an incredible collection of extraordinarily expensive automobiles. And you go by there, you don't see any activity. Uh, it just sits there and whatever they do inside very mysterious, but.
So all this history is to let us know that that's how it'd be done here.
That's how, no, here, not not quite. He he, he does, in fact, he's in the business of selling his vehicle. I'm not sure the guy on New Street is. I think he just played. But uh, every once in a while, I do see a car carrier in front of it. But the cars that come in that will upper too. That's the thing. Uh, but the uh, I want to tell you is that it's a very low impact use of this property. And uh, it's certainly going to be uh compatible with any of the uses that are existing in the park right now. And to that extent, we're going to answer any questions that you might have, but we're going to encourage you uh to allow this use because it uh just seems to be appropriate for economic development in the park. That's, you know, what, that's what Francis Clark is here for. So I'll be happy to answer any question.
We'll hand it to the public. Anybody in the room have any questions for the applicant? Anybody participating via Zoom have questions for this applicant?
Ken, I just wanted to, uh, it's Beth Kabagno. I just wanted to note for the record that we did refer this um text amendment to Westcott for their input, and we did not receive any um negative comments regarding it.
Thank you. I don't see any hands raised, David, so I'm presuming there's no questions from the audience there. Commission members? Any questions?
Um, uh, yeah, is this one of the lots on at the end of Trowbridge, one of the new lots? Yes. Um, no, I think this would be a great use of property. Um, I would even be open to expanding it. Um, and not saying you have to store them um inside, because if you have Ferrari store outside, you're crazy. Well, let's be honest, it's a, it's a industrial um commercial park. We should be encouraging this kind of thing in there. I don't think we should be neutering them, telling them they can't put signage advertising the sale of used cars. I don't think uh Ingersoll or Blasis is going to be meaning a lot. The end of Trowbridge is dead and rode. But if he has a car out and it's a beautiful day, you have to put it out front and it's one for sale, he should be allowed to do it, uh in my opinion. Um, again, I don't think you're going to have millions of people driving down the end of Trowbridge, just just happen to be driving by to see, you know, a one-off whatever he's he's building out there. Um, but yeah, I think it's a great use of property and and again, I'd be open to even expanding a little bit. I look forward to you uh building down there.
Any questions?
Well, I do look forward to it, but I think it's that the as uh section four A K is written with uh with the, with all of the vehicles being inside, and there shouldn't be any advertising outside. But first, what we'll get to doing this part, we get to the to the building.
I agree with Paul. It's nice that you're willing to invest in Bethel and uh good luck with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Rednard, questions?
Uh, I'm good.
Thank you. David, are you thinking of waiting on the application?
Uh, not not to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman. I, just as a housekeeping, did we have a public notice that we had to read in?
Did you read it?
No, she, oh, you did? Okay. I just want to make sure. Um, my, to my knowledge, uh, this is just a text amendment, Mr. Chairman. Right, so um, with with respect to uh Beth's input uh from earlier, I don't think there's anything else to I mean, any other agents just were waiting on this time.
Okay, then I would recommend we close the public hearing.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll see you for part two.
Yeah, we'll be back. With a little bit of luck, we'll be back with a safe plan soon. Thank you.
Absolutely approve it.
That's the luck.
Business meeting. Everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? So for Doug Cooney, I'm gonna. For Rich Tevis, I'm gonna see Rob, and for Penny, I'm gonna see Linda.
Okay, you're good.
All right. Has everybody an opportunity to review the minutes?
And we, uh, just housekeeping, I did finish the uh affordable housing seminar. Wasn't here last week to tell you that, and I did watch the video from last week to finish up the memory. Thank you.
Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of ten twenty-four, twenty-three.
All in favor?
Another sentence written.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's 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 as written.
As written, yes.
Very good.
Very good. Amanda, do we have any invoices?
Yes.
What's that?
Nothing.
We had no names.
No, really.
No moves.
Yes, um, the news times uh for one thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents.
We make a motion to pay the news time one thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents. The legal number.
Second.
Do you all in favor? Names? No moves. New business, um. Mr. Olson, I'm gonna refuse myself from the forty-two Plum Trees Road conversation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is just for acceptance.
Just for acceptance.
It is, okay.
Okay, it's for consideration and that's what I thought. Okay. Okay, can you call up the site plan, please, David?
So Kitty will sit in this chair for me.
What are we looking at? Which one are we looking at? Are we looking at Chris Taylor?
No, we're looking at forty-two Plum Trees Road. That was add. No, we're looking at forty-two Plum Trees Road. That was added to the agenda.
I know, but.
And we're going to talk about. Working Katrina Circle lines.
Mr. Olson. Good evening. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel at two seventy-five Greenwood Avenue. My firm name is Land Use and Conservation Council. I'm here tonight to be at K and P Associates LLC. Principal is Steve DiMarco. He regrets he couldn't be here tonight. He has a meeting with his son's school in Massachusetts. This is extremely simple. David, can you move down to page three? One more page. There you go. So you remember that this development at the corner of Whittleseed and Plum Trees Road was approved by the commission. A ten-unit affordable housing development. We started doing some of the construction along the roadway. Can you zoom in on the existing home proof? In developing our plans and sales plan in particular, we've determined that the existing house is too big for one unit. So we'd like to divide it into two units. That would be very helpful for the financials of the project and make everything match quite a bit better. So this is the only change to this site plan is to put a line through the middle. Of the house and divide this into two units, renumbering them seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Sidewalk here. Now has a little fork, so it goes to each door. That's the only site plan change, and that's why it's an amended site plan. Parking changes, there are no parking spaces, additional parking spaces required, because there were enough for the initial development. And there's no change in stormwater, there's no change in previous coverage. David, can you scroll down to the architecturals? It's probably a different file. You have to rotate that.
With the file that I was given, I cannot do that.
No, huh? Okay, so you also turn your head side, Grace. So this is the exterior view. It stays the same essentially, except for adding an additional door. Go back to the floor plans, please. As you could see on there, there's the main house, and then the addition on the left side, and screened-in porch on the right. So this is the first floor plan. Essentially, the addition on the left bottom floor is one unit. And the main house on the right with the screened-in porch on the main floor is the other unit. On the second floor, there will be a bedroom with stairs. That serve the unit on the left. And bedroom, sitting room, and bath that serve the unit on the right. So the upstairs is only above the main house. It's not above the addition. So we split a little bit by certain of the two units.
So the upstairs is serving the the little section.
No, only a portion of it is. So this is the little section on the side. And there are stairs that go up from there into this bedroom. And that's it. That's that's part of that unit. Everything else is part of the other unit.
Usually, the house will look the same from the outside.
Usually, the house will look exactly the same, except for the addition of a new front door for the unit on the side.
ADA capable? These two units are not all the others were.
All the new units were capable of being ADA accessible. I think with the changes on the interior here, these will have the same capability. Again, we've got a lot of confusion about that. That means it could be done.
No, I understand.
We're not going to do it unless we.
You were crystal clear, man. I understood.
So that's the only change, and we think it's appropriate for you to act on the site plan as amendment, as amendment. We submitted an amended affordability plan to correct the units and show how that all works out. So that's our our request to you is to review it and act on it. No need for a public hearing for this really extremely minor change. Thank you.
What is this affordability?
Sorry?
Do anything to the affordability numbers?
Doesn't do anything to the affordability numbers. The town is allowed to do rounding, and it fits within the rounding. The unit on the side of the existing house will be the sixty percent unit.
Need a little important spot to read, yeah?
I think it was twenty-eight. So that's well more than what was required. Well more than what was required, so we didn't need to add anything to accommodate the additional unit. These units won't have any garages. They allow an exterior parking spaces only.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions.
Commission members, Bob, do you have any questions?
No, I'm sorry. I kind of buttered them before.
Linda? Nope. Kenny?
No questions.
Bob, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We need to add this to tonight's work session?
If the commission so wishes.
For the record, I receded myself. Okay, item on the agenda is Christopher Taylor, special permit for Katrina Circle. Is there anybody here representing the applicant?
Well, no, no, this is.
It's just to put on your calendar, right?
I'm sorry?
This is just to put on our calendar?
Yes, that's correct.
For a public hearing?
Oh, that's that's correct. I'm trying to find the form of that amendment. Oh, it is? Oh, yes. So it is. Okay. Thank you for that one. Okay. So I'll just read this in briefly because it was not on the Google Drive for tonight. In the product description, and the reason for this coming before you as a special permit. Is with regards to section three point three point eight point four of the zoning regulation. To locate an accessory structure within the front yard. Its size would be ten feet by twenty feet.
Is it like you said?
That's correct. Pretty straightforward. You guys have done a handful of these.
Oh, yes.
If you guys want to review the application folder, I can pass amongst you guys. We just need to make a motion to accept and then to schedule a public hearing days.
Okay, so I'm feeling like a motion to set a public hearing date for Chris Taylor, a special permit for Katrina Circle. On.
Ah, you can. December twelfth.
December twelfth.
Holy shit, your front yard.
Right, right. But if, but if if the next meeting is the twenty-eighth, there may not be enough time for. Legal notices to allow. That's the issue.
Does somebody second?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Days? Don't move. Did you want to see this?
Thank you.
That was new business. Work session. First item for discussion is forty-two Nashville Road. Tim Draper, eight thirty G affordable housing, three units.
I reuse myself on this application.
Okay, so the the contents for this application. And if you guys want to look at smaller versions of the latest revisions in site plans you can make. All of the contents are right there before you.
Would you like it again?
No, 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 no. This is this is just for your reference. Just in case you guys wanted to have it on hand to look at. The commission requested that I have a draft resolution of approval prepared for tonight's meeting. Which I believe Amanda is going to distribute to you all right now. Thank you very much for doing that. I'm going to pop it up on the screen, and as I do so. I would want the, the commission should be cognizant of the following, okay? The first item of which is that the inland wetlands commission still needs to render a decision. On an application for regulated activities that is before them for this property. You had asked, the commission rather had asked. To make sure that that was the way that things proceeded, and I and I looked through the regulations. It is section eight point four point C points ten. That in in layman's terms, it says, the wetlands commission, if there is an application for regulated activities before them. You cannot render a decision ahead of them doing so. Right, so so I I just want you to be mindful of that. I'm going to put the draft resolution up on my screen. I'll give you guys a chance to read that. If you'd like, feel free to ask me any questions after you are done. There it is. You can see that, Mr. Rednard, correct?
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
David, is there anything we need to be aware of? Actually, a reminder that has fed to the number of affordable units. That's the item number four is that grant.
Right, so so the total number of units for this affordable housing application is five. There are two with that. Of the proposed five in total, two are already, they exist. For lack of better words, in the residential structure that is already on the property. The additional three would come from the new structure that would be built next door. So the way that eight dash thirty G reads, thirty percent of those units have to be deemed affordable. If you were to multiply thirty percent into five, you get one and a half. Attorney Olson pointed out to you guys before, you guys have a discretion to round to either one or two affordable units. If you wanted to go for two, you could go for one unit at sixty percent. Of the state median income and the other at eighty percent of the state median income.
One fifty and one eighty?
Sixty.
Sixty and eighty.
The rest of the language in here that you'll see is correct. Those are just.
All of those are all the things we have on there.
That's correct.
No, it's just fine.
So.
But we have to wait for this.
Right, so I'll put my inland wetlands hat on here for a brief moment. A site plan. Thanks. A site plan review. The inland wetlands commission is scheduled to have that take place at their next regular meeting on November twenty-seventh. That is, if I'm not mistaken, two Mondays from now.
The day before.
That's correct. They could theoretically act upon that application that night. They could, and they have to. If they do, then you with having this draft resolution of approval in mind. Could act upon and vote upon this on the twenty-eighth. Otherwise, your next meeting where you can vote on this would be December eleventh, if I'm not mistaken. Oh, no, December twelfth. Thank you. Eleventh is one of these. Did you have a question, Bob?
We. So we're still awaiting the inland wetlands decision.
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll table this on.
Table this on.
Discussion required?
Yes, there.
Even tentative.
Sorry, Bob?
Yeah, intent is it, right?
Not that it's tentatively.
Yes, we had a consensus in the last meeting. Next on the agenda. In the hub shopping center site plan, a special permit, two seventy-nine, three ninety-three Greenwood Avenue. Application was to allow for. The addition of two. Sites for additional buildings, one with the drive-through, one without.
See if I can locate the site plan for the Mr. Chairman. We do have the hard copies here.
And do we have anything pending, David, that we're waiting for input from?
There was only, there's only one thing that came to my attention, and that was received today from the Bethel Fire Marshal. There was an email received this afternoon through thirty-four P M. I will read it aloud for you guys, and I quote, Beth and Dave. I took a look at the revised site plans and apparatus access. With peers from ladder truck and still maneuver to each of the proposed buildings as well as to the large shopping center. No concern for F D. I'm going to assume that means require department access at this. That's and that's really the only new thing of notes that you that. Would would come to mind for this application.
Comments, discussion points, anybody concerned?
No, I think, well, I myself, going through the the site walk and everything, that they really did come forward. At the end, changing, that's the one building would no longer have the drive-through. But especially for me, it was changing where the entrance and exits were. That, to me, was really important, especially the one off Diamond Avenue. I I think it was really very well done, and I and I like the way they set it up. And and the way they made various changes that we we suggested. In favor.
Do you take a consensus on?
Anybody else have any other comment?
Because we want to get any comments. Right, we're good. Bob, anything else?
I'm good.
All right.
Okay.
Consensus, not a vote on approval or.
Having a resolution written up for. Yes, I think that would be my my motion.
Yeah.
For approval, Kitty, for approval, Rob, Linda, and Bob. And Ken, so. Take care of that.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. We'll be ready for you at the next meeting.
Next item on the agenda is, and I apologize, I'm sure I'm not going to pronounce it. Daya Tree Corporation, eighteen Stony Hill Road zoning amendment, four point four E height. Comments, questions, discussion points? Any additional information that was received, David, that?
None to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman.
I just, and I may have this wrong, but I would just like to remind the commission that it hasn't been in the far recent past. That we did change the amendment to go back to three stories in that corridor. After having. Had four stories previously. I would want, and not in favor of going back to four stories. I'd like to hear what you have on commission members.
I agree with you. Keep it away of this.
I I totally agree, and especially after, you know, going back over what we did in in two thousand and seven. It it, we were very specific, and I can I can read it if you don't mind. It said to accommodate the maximum of land use in the corridor, the zoning should allow these principal permitted uses, not as special permits. The ninety-five square foot building lot per size limit might be modified and hype up to four. Four story maybe desired, specialized such as hotels. So everything, what we had back there was. Not a positive thing. We were looking at different avenues and different things, and I don't think our consensus was that it should be four stories. And I I, after going through it once already, I don't really see the four stories. This this one piece of property is exceptional. Because it is an all. But we cannot approve something.
Because it's an.
Because, no, because of, because of the one property, unfortunately. So I would go, I would be voting against. Because, no, because of, because of the one problem, unfortunately. So I would go, I would be voting against this.
Well, I would vote against it. It wasn't barely a year ago we.
We just changed that, exactly.
Bob, any comments?
Uh, I, I take, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, in what we changed, we, we didn't want any more residential four-story. That's why they come in with this under our hotel operation. On a piece of property that probably i- is, it's never going to get developed in the back there unless it's a hotel.
I mean, that one piece of property.
That one piece of property. And, and I think that's how the, the thing was written and we questioned that at the last meeting. Let's prevent somebody else from coming in with, you know, something and saying, you gave him four, four stories. I want four stories residential. We don't have to do that.
But we got, this text amendment.
Strictly breeds a hotel.
But this, this text amendment isn't just for that one property.
No, but it's, it's. It's limited and it's a hotel, not a residential, like, you know, the front piece of the you know, copper square there.
Until the next applicant comes in and wants to put an apartment building up for stories.
We're going back to the same precedent.
Calls it a hotel, we can't do it under this.
I'm sorry, Rob.
Yeah, I, I think you know Bob's point is that it wouldn't apply to residential. But, yeah, I mean, it's this particular property, I, I'm not, sort of, it's, it's the fact that the zone change, you know, it would apply to the. Is that the only recourse that this applicant has to do what they want to do?
And I don't know if there is another place that they could go.
Well, not really a, a place they, they can go, but another way of approaching here, that particular property. Yeah, they could add a, they could add a story to the existing building and then only build a three-story building in the back. And you still get your same amount of rooms without having a four-story building.
We asked, we asked that question, if, if he could add on to the building and make it four stories in the front.
Expensive.
And they didn't know that the structure was.
No, they said that it would be prohibitively expensive, I do believe, was what they said.
I just think as a commission.
Building down, it's starting over from scratch.
Yeah, you're right, Paul.
Yeah.
You're right.
And we, we did decide that very strongly.
I think if, if we go back, it might have even been unanimous, so.
It was, that was.
I would um ask for consensus of, have a letter of resolution now, prepared for the next meeting. In favor?
Non-motion.
Non-motion. Thank you. Um, twenty twenty-four planning and zoning commission schedule? Do we have it, David?
Uh, I believe, Amanda should be passing it out.
Oh, I didn't make it properly. It's up there. It's on the Google bar. I mean, I have one.
No, it's okay. Okay. There we go.
Let's look at these dates, hold on.
Intents and purposes, most of these regular meeting dates fall on the second and fourth Tuesday of March. Um, your, your notable exceptions would be, you don't have a second reading. Summer recess, and the same goes for December full year holidays.
And what day is Thanksgiving next year?
Uh, Thanksgiving.
It's later, it's later month.
Yeah, Thanksgiving falls on the, so your November twenty-sixth meeting would be the Tuesday before.
We've done that before.
Yeah, I make a motion that we adopt this schedule for planning and zoning commission meetings for twenty-fourth. Second by Mr. Parsons. Want to comment? They want a cake on June eleventh. It's your birthday.
I'll bake it.
David, put that on the schedule.
Or you want cupcakes? I could do cupcakes.
Okay, on the favor? Nays? Don't move.
Okay.
David, did you have anything else for us this evening?
No.
I take a motion to add the forty-two pound trees amendment site plan to our work session.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. My second.
On favor to add forty-two pound street amendment to the work session? Nays? Don't move. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I see no issues with it. It seems like a, like a reasonable request. I like the project when it was first uh brought in, and I still like it. So, I would.
Again, I'm going to accuse myself of using.
Oh, okay.
Conversation.
We've, do we have, any further comments about this application?
I have no problem. As long as we keep the, the original visibility of the house, that's all.
Right.
I think he was very clear about that, that the exterior is only getting a back door.
Exactly. Okay, so I see we can say, we have a consensus? Yes, so that, that's all we need, yes?
So you will, so uh if, if a resolution of approval is needed for this, which I imagine it is, then it will be ready for the next meeting on the twenty-first.
So, yeah, consensus.
Oh, we just can't do it ourselves?
I, I, the staff wasn't prepared for, um, I was, I was under the impression that the amendments um, wasn't, wasn't going to be added to your work session tonight.
Okay.
Um, if, I, I would just recommend that you, that you wait.
Let's, let's take consensus to draft the resolution.
Yeah, yes, most definitely.
Oh, the favor? Bob, in favor?
Hi.
Okay, well, yeah. So you're going to do that.
Very good.
Come on back. Get back over here.
Is that guy roller skates?
No problem.
All right, Peter. Any additional comments from the commission?
Not tonight.
Public?
Public input.
Nineteen Midway? That is the zoning board of appeals.
We were told that maybe it was here tonight.
Here tonight, it was on, it was on the schedule.
The zoning board of appeals for the twenty-first.
I was on.
Not, not planning it.
On the board on Bethel site for tonight here. Room D, I've got it.
I'm sorry, this is our agenda.
Midway job was on, and because they want to put in a bit. Uh, well, they've been running. They were running near B and B. We have, is, uh.
That's what that was.
Oh, the B and B, uh, of. Got it confused with Putnam Park.
So are you exact here? Hope you were entertained.
Happy turkey, everybody.
Have a question, though. Now, so that change at Putnam Park. That's just for that one section of road.
Public hearing next meeting.
That, that R B and B, where is that allowed in town?
If, if, if you want to ask questions like that, I, I, I would advise that you visit by tomorrow. I'd be happy to answer that question for you with this still being before the planning and zoning commission. And with the public hearing being continued to the next, we're really not in any place to continue discussing that until the next meeting. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, David, may I just say something in regards to that? Nineteen Midway Drive, what is going on there has absolutely nothing to do with the bed and breakfast proposal at one fifty Putnam Park Road. It is two different um situations. I'm sorry that they had to sit there all evening, but that meeting for nineteen Midway Drive, the appeal of my decision is going to be next Tuesday in the same room.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Diane Ryan, thirteen Karen Ryan. I just have a question. On, on the website, it's got um of the uh public hearing for Danbury um about the propane um uh, which is December sixth, it's, it's going to be on the end of uh, of uh, Pain Road. So there's three Bethel people that are affected by it um with a whole, it's got a whole thing with a drawing of the building and everything.
December sixth for who?
Um, whoever the propane company is.
No, but I mean, who is having here?
Count of Danbury?
Danbury. So, but it's on the website, you know, because you have ones that show, you know, things that are like Brookfield or Danbury. It's, it's a.
Usually if it's within so many feet, Danbury should notify us.
Right, so you've probably got something on it. But any, anyway, it's on the website, and my question was, you know, does the board have anything or the, or the town of Bethel as far as trucks going down Pain Road or, or anything like that that you um represent, you know, or the, the town represents and is concerned about truck traffic or, you know, anything like that? That, my question was, you know, what does the board do or the town, if it's something that's going to affect traffic?
So is this, is this for Hokon Gas? This, this is, this is, this is that, that would be the facility that, that is on Pain Road that is on.
But it's, it's now a new owner or something, propane company that's out of Ridgefield.
Okay, but, but it is, is it formerly at, is it at that site that was formerly owned by them?
I think so. So I guess my question was, is, I don't know whether there's truck traffic allowed on the Pain Road or, or, you know, you can make, you know, say it has to make a left turn to get out of there, to go on the highway and not go through Bethel or, you know.
Are they proposing something different there?
Yeah, it's, it's a big building that's being, that was actually, um, they have a drawing. If, if you look on the website, on your website, there's a link to it. Um, so.
I can, I can speak in regards to that.
Okay.
Um, the town receives referrals. Uh, we did receive a referral in regards to the um Hokon addition, and it was referred to um the fire marshal for review. And um he did review it and he did send comments. We did look at it as far as um sightlines and things of that issue. But um did not find any defects in that as far as keeping trucks from entering or exiting the site and going on our local streets. We really have no jurisdiction over that.
That was my question, you know, because I, and that's something you might not remember seeing on the website before, but it has links of other, you know, towns. So, anyway, thanks.
Nancy, before we close the meeting? Motion to close, motion to return.
No, don't you dare. Don't you dare.
What?
I just want to, I just want to tell everybody, I'm sorry I'm not there. Happy Thanksgiving. And thank you, David, for taking care of everything tonight. We'll see you next time.
Now, don't rest. All right, good night. Thank you. Don't move.